The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, and all of the City of Elmers is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the Mayor of the City of Elmers has determined that an in-person meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the City Council participating in the October 18, 2021 City Council meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified, and determine that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Conquest. Absent. Bastido.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Verimus.
Doiter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Announcements. We have Melissa Wolf, who will be sitting in, as our city attorney. Andy Acker, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
All right, Andy Acker, back up. Thank you. Any other announcements at this time? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement that Alderman Hill and I will be having a second ward meeting on November 10th at 7:00 PM. I think the location's to be determined, but we're penciling in that date. November 10th, 7:00 PM for the second ward meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Any other announcements? Very good. Receipt of written communications from the public. Does anyone have a written communication they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Mr. Eisenmenger, if I may ask, we received a letter that was sent. Is this from you or your wife?
It's from my wife.
All right, so for the council, that's from Gwen Eisenmenger, is the author of this letter. Thank you. Any other written communications? There being none. We move on to public forum. Item four. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any topic they wish. You'll be limited to three minutes, so that the council can get about its business and so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We will call your name, and if you will approach the microphone over to my right, your left, you state your name. Address is optional. If you give your address and we don't know who you are, that will help us to follow up with you. That being said, Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mayor. We have Mike Novak.
Hello, I'm right here. Everybody, I'm Mike Novak. I live in the Fifth Ward on South Hawthorne. My in-laws are the Dungans, who would be surrounded by the proposed Roberto's parking lot. I don't think that, I think that all of you are familiar with me by now. Before I get into the data showing that, you know, this will hurt the property values of the neighbors, I just want to make a couple of points. First, I've heard some talk that, you know, this isn't, the proposal is not a zoning change or whatever. It's a, you know, conditional use permit, and lots are still residential. That's a, that's a distinction without a difference, you know, so I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that. If you have a parking lot there, it's commercial, you know, from a functional point of view. Second, some of you seem to be afraid of doing the right thing because the Zoning and Planning Commission made a decision. You know, that doesn't make any sense to me. There's a three-step or four-step process to this for a reason. There's checks and balances. If that were not the case, the Zoning and Planning Commission Committee would be making the decision, and that would be that. We wouldn't be here today. So, you know, we can't just hang our hat on whatever they said, especially because you guys said that some of their decisions in that were arbitrary. Well, maybe the whole thing was arbitrary, you know? Why was that, why was the 11:00 PM arbitrary and not the entire decision? Anyways, we're going to get into this. The application does not meet the requirements. It's going to hurt the property values. I looked at 3,000 sales of homes between 2016 and 2020. I had a friend, who's a realtor, get it off of the MLS for me, and I compared the data to homes sold at the same time that boarded parking lots that were in the Minority Report from Alderwoman Palomsky. There were three sales of single-family homes in that time on those lots. I realize this is a small sample size, but there are not many comparable parking lots to what the applicant is proposing here. 312, 316 North River Glen and 1115 North Highland Avenue. Broke this down by year, month, bedrooms and bathrooms, and I compared it to the average price per square foot across all of Elmhurst. The best-case scenario, and I also did that with the bedrooms and bathrooms, I did it against all of it. The best-case scenario here is a 6% loss in value for the neighbors. Out of the 12 comparisons that I did, three houses, four different comparisons there. I emailed all of you. It's an Excel document. That 6% was only, the only scenario with a less than 12% loss of value. Three comparisons showed a loss of value over 21%. There was a between 6% and 22% loss of value for the homes next to the parking lots. For a $300,000 home, incidentally, what the applicant paid for the house at 272 West Ecclestone, that would be a loss of $17,000 to $63,000. For a $500,000 home, it's $28,000 to $105,000. For a $650,000 home, that's a loss of approximately 36...
You're at three and a half minutes, so please be mindful of the time.
Okay, I'll wrap it up as quick as I can here. That's a loss of 37 to $137,000. Now, the applicant only paid $15,000 for one of the lots. Like, you're going to make the neighbors lose more in value than the applicant paid for the lot. You know, this is pretty clear that this is going to cause a loss of value. And if you guys don't think that's significant, please let me send you my resume, so that you can hire me making an amount that that is no longer significant to me, because I would be upside down. One last thing I'm going to say here, this is directly to the applicant. If you cared about the neighbors, if you cared about the neighbors and their financial...
Sir, your time is up, and you're to direct your comments to the council, not to the applicant, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You do the right thing and vote against this parking lot.
Next is Grant Duncan.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. It's been a long process. It's been a stressful process. It's nothing I never want to go through. And I hope to God, no matter what happens tonight, you pass something so this never has to happen again, because obviously something's rotten in Denmark. And I've called it out the entire time. There's no math to do on it either. So let's leave it at that. We strive to be as good or better than a place like Oakbrook. And if you go back in time and you Google Vito Morisi York Tavern, you'll find that he was denied the same thing they're asking for here. Don't the people here in Elmhurst deserve the same? You know, after all the work and the money that was spent, and talking to people, and newspaper articles and whatnot, I find it extremely disrespectful that we took a vote with not having a full council. It's disrespectful to the residents. It's disrespectful for the people that volunteer all their time, and the whole process. I'll leave you with this. We will never forget the people that stood with us, and we will never forget the people that stood against us. Have a good night.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
Hi, my name is Rob Eisenmenger. You may know me by now, may not. I am going to be directly affected as well. I live at 271 West Ecclestone. There were a couple things out of the last meeting that we had that just struck me as sad. As an alderman, I've always seen it as your responsibility to represent us, the residents. It says it on the board docs, that your job is to represent us, maybe not necessarily the businesses. I've had two of my aldermen, including Mayor Levin and Tina Parks, at my residence, where they said, if they were not willing to negotiate with you, that you would vote no. Yet, last week or two weeks ago, you both voted yes. I asked why. So, we've been at that table, and that hasn't happened. Jim, you recommended that there was something that happened in Oak Park where the residents actually fought the lights and then found that they were okay after the garbage was cleaned up and everything like that, in our discussion. The truth is, is that they moved next to that stadium. The stadium lights went up after that. I didn't move next to a parking lot. This is coming my way. I'm now having to bear that cross, if you will. Losing value in my house? I've asked a lot of different people, would they like to live next to a house? Would they like to live next to an empty lot? Or would they like to live next to an empty parking lot? Or a parking lot? Truth is, is I've never had anybody say that they want to live next to a parking lot. Palomsky, Alderman Palomsky, you said in the zoning commission that you don't want to live next to a parking lot, but you don't see a reason why we can't say no to this. Well, as a resident, as somebody that's depending on you to be my voice, I want you to vote no on this, because it is going to hurt me as a resident. It's only benefiting one person here, and this is private parking for them, not for the community. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
That's all but signed up, Mayor.
All right. That is all who have signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have the opportunity to sign in, but who would like to participate in public forum?
Good evening again, everyone. Mark Daniel. I'm an Elmhurst resident, practicing attorney for, well, parts of four decades now, I suppose. From the perspective of your vote tonight, it's a little bit different than what you saw last time I was before you. I'd ask you to focus on the terms of your ordinance. You haven't yet. Every time we've raised something, such as required parking only being allowed on these lots, and their applicants admitted at hearing that there's no required parking in the district, you know, that was ignored. The structure of the zoning ordinance was ignored, and you're probably going to try to rewrite the ordinance on who can vote. In fact, you're probably going to rewrite the ordinance on where you specify the terms of a conditional use. Because you don't do it in this ordinance, you're delegating unconstitutionally and in violation of the Elmhurst Code of Ordinances to Mr. Grabowski and staff during a permitting process. That is garbage. It is lazy legislation, and it violates our code. There's a reason for that law, and this is exactly why. Attach a landscape plan. If you're going to require landscaping, don't say it'll be determined during the permitting process. That violates the law of Elmhurst. Alderman Nudera is not elected. Your code says, those who vote on ordinances are elected aldermen. What does that mean? Attorney Fox, Attorney Acker, they're on board, they can read the code. What does it mean when the code says elected aldermen rather than corporate authorities? Please pay attention tonight. If you're going to do this deed, that you attempted to lay out at your last meeting with less than a full council, and try it again with less than a full council, you ought to do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public forum? There being none, public forum is closed. Thank you all. Clerk Tamer, would you read the consent agenda?
Yes.
Item five.
Minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 4th, 2021, 5.2. Accounts payable, October 13th, 2021. Total $2,215,392.83. 5.3 is a report, modification of line of credit agreement. 5.4 is a report, amendment to MCO. 4.04 Economic Development Commission. 5.5 is a report, liquor license, Elmhurst Hall LLC. 5.6, disposal of city... Scroll too far, hold on. Report, disposal of city equipment generators. 5.7, an ordinance approving a final planned unit development for the construction of an entryway vestibule and realignment of the parking lot for the property commonly known as 343 South York Road, Elmhurst, Illinois, City View Community Church. 5.8, an ordinance granting variations from the lot coverage and rear yard setback requirements to the property commonly known as 130 West Church Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.9, an ordinance amending Section 44.122 entitled Limited Parking Zones enumerated of Division III entitled Parking Restrictions of Article VII entitled Stopping, Standing, and Parking of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Elmhurst Municipal Code, Central Business District Parking Restrictions. 5.10, an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to Section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6. 5.11, an ordinance waiving bid authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the water reservoir pump repair project. 5.12, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Metropolitan Family Services DuPage. 5.13, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for custodial maintenance of parking decks and pedestrian tunnels Project Number 21-28. And 5.14, a resolution to authorize an agreement to enter into an agreement for the 2022 Water Main Improvements Project Professionals Engineering Services.
Clerk Tamer, is there any alderman that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, either to vote against it or for further discussion? Alderman Brennan, anything?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. All right. There, Clerk Tamer, if you'll call the roll, please.
We don't have a motion.
I'm sorry. I almost forgot something. Since you're laughing, Alderman Toledo with a motion. Alderman Mulliner with a second. Now, if you will.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest absent. Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Doiter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda passes. Ordinances, item six, 6.1. Clerk Tamer, read the ordinance clause.
An ordinance authorizing an 11th loan modification agreement for the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. See item 5.4.
Thank you. In order to bring this before council, can I have a motion? Alderman Dunn, second. Alderman Toledo. Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you. This ordinance is placed on the agenda tonight, referencing item 5.4, extending our letter of credit agreement that we have with Fifth Third Bank. We have a 200, or, I'm sorry, we have a $10 million line of credit with Fifth Third Bank, and currently have used, we have a $7 million balance with that, so we have $3 million open. With the planned expenditures for TIF, it is the opinion of the committee to keep it at the $10 million, and continue with the current provider of Fifth Third for this, for this line of credit. So I'd ask for your support in, on this ordinance.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Toledo.
Just a note, just, I'm sorry that I didn't catch this when I reviewed the agenda, but the ordinance 6.1 refers to see item 5.4. It should say see item 5.3, which was the report that we passed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Any other discussion on item 6.1? There being none, Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest absent. Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Doiter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Item 6.1 passes. Would you read the ordinance on 6.2?
An ordinance granting conditional use permits for the development of the properties commonly known as 272-276 West Ecclestone Avenue and 283 West Ecclestone Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois.
May I have a motion to put this before the council? Alderman Palomsky, second. Alderman Doiter. Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. The Roberto's Agenda item is now proceeding to the ordinance stage. The bulk of the ordinance, pages three through 12, consists of findings. So my comments will be brief, but focused on the findings. A great resource for technical assistance for zoning and planning decision-making is provided by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, or CMAP. The guidance on findings explains, although the governing body retains the discretion to act in whatever way determines to be best, it should consider carefully the recommendation of any advisory body which has reviewed the proposal under a statutory requirement. In this case, that's our zoning planning commission. Public hearing, and in this case, the ZPC hearing on the application for special use permit, which is a term that we'll use for this, special use would include conditional use, it's a fact-finding hearing. At a such hearing, it's the duty of the body holding the hearing to make the findings a fact. Expressions of opinion and general polls of popularity or unpopularity of a proposal are not relevant. The findings included in the ordinance rely on the work of the Zoning and Planning Commission. The conditions begin on page 13, and they include an eight-foot opaque fence, landscaping and fence to be determined by staff in the process, permitting process, operating hours between 9:00 AM and midnight, with lighting requirements restricted to the lighting plan that's attached, compliance with stormwater storage requirements, which accounts for any new net impervious surface, so all of that, any change in net impervious that is an increase, there's a calculation that requires that water to be stored on property. And in addition, there is the requirement of an inlet that allows water to flow from the northeast neighbor's property, off the property and through, into Roberto's property. So, I don't want to rehash what we've discussed before. I do want to thank everybody for their work on this. This is a, an agenda item like I've never seen before, and I want to thank the public. I want to thank our staff, fellow council members, for all of your work and attention, and ask for your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Palomsky. Alderman Mulliner?
Noting that we're missing an alderman tonight, I would make a motion to table this item until November 1st, the next available city council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Bastido to table.
Leave the motion to postpone to a date certain.
So, actually, you're moving to postpone to a date certain being the next meeting?
Yes.
All right. Very good. You agree with that, Alderman Bastido?
Yes.
All right. Discussion on the motion to continue to a date certain. No discussion? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my only comment would be, I think that we are very much, as a city council, within the rights of our laws. We have a quorum. We have business before us. I don't see any reason not to move forward with that business with a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Other discussion? Alderman Park?
I agree with Alderman Toledo in that we have all but one of our alderpeople here, and there's no guarantee that if we go to the next date in November, that one of us won't have a sick kid, or a cold, or anything like that.
Very good. Other discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll. This is on the motion to continue, item 6.2, to a date certain being the next city council meeting.
Toledo?
Excuse me, Alderman Dunn. Point of order, I thought if you had two aldermen postpone to a date certain, that would be so moved. Discussing, going on that. I could be wrong, but that was one of the...
Is that the section you're relying on?
I believe we have to vote on this.
All right, let me, give me a moment to check that. All right. I'm thinking you are referring to, unfortunately, someone took my copy that I had all marked up, but I believe you're reporting, referring to what I ruled double H, report of committees. So this is not a committee report, and it's an ordinance, so that, in my opinion, I would rule that does not apply. But Alderman Mulliner, if you see a different rule, then let's take a moment, and I will read through a little further, see if I see anything else.
I think it's at the top of the page. To postpone to a date certain. 234, or deciding that to debate.
Mayor?
All right. Actually, Alderman Mulliner, the error, I think, that is, in this is, this was supposed to be decided without debate, but I can't pull back the debate.
Actually, that's a, that's a table. We can debate the...
All right. That's, no, we're correct. So, do you believe, are we in agreement?
I believe you're correct. I believe we have to vote on this.
All right. We have, we have debated, we have a motion. Alderman Palomsky, is this a point...
Well, sort of a point of order, just, I want clarification. I'm confirming, is this from Section 2.06R, motions in order, point three, delay on the table? Or is this adjourned to a date, or, yeah, I guess to lay, motion to lay on the table? Or postpone indefinitely, or to a date certain?
It's postponed.
Number eight, to a date certain.
So it's eight? Okay. Thank you.
All right, everyone clears, so the motion is to defer item 6.2 to a date certain being the next council meeting. And I guess I could look that up, but...
It's November 1st.
November 1st. All right. So I believe we're ready to vote. Clerk Tamer, if you will call the roll on that motion.
Toledo?
No.
Cahill?
No.
Nudera?
No.
Park?
No.
Conquest absent. Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Was it an aye or no? Nay?
Aye.
Aye.
Verimus?
No.
Doiter?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Hill?
No.
Palomsky?
No.
Johnson?
Nope.
Three ayes, 10 nos, one absent.
Three ayes, 10 nays, one absent. The motion fails. We're back on to the main motion, 6.2, on ordinance, the main ordinance. Additional discussion on the main ordinance. Alderman Doiter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address one element of the ordinance...
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address one element of the ordinance, and that is fence height. In writing before us sitting here is the first bullet point on page 13 of the ordinance. As it exists now, the ordinance states, "The applicant shall install an eight-foot opaque fence along the east side of the proposed north parking lot adjacent to 271 West Eggleston, along the east side of the south parking lot adjacent to 270 and 262 West Eggleston, and along the rear of the single-family home properties located at 270 and 266 West Eggleston, where they are adjacent to the south parking lot. See Exhibit B attached here too and incorporated herein by reference." I move to amend the ordinance, as indicated before you, by adding the following language.
Just to be clear, Alderman Deuter, there's one more sentence you left out that is in the existing ordinance. Begins with the exact location of the fence?
Right, sorry. I should have added that too. I was pulling something else. So again, existing ordinance has this sentence, "The exact location of the fence and exact location of the landscaping to be finalized between city staff and the applicant by way of the fences, city's fence permit process." So I move to amend the ordinance, as indicated before you, by adding the following language. Exception, within 120 days of the effective date of the ordinance, the property owners at 262, 266, 270, and 271 West Eggleston, upon written notice to the city, may opt for a fence height of four feet, six feet, or eight feet for the fence abutting their property, so long as the entirety of the fence along their property line is the same other than 270 West Eggleston, which can choose four feet, six feet, or eight feet for the entirety of their adjoining lot line, and a different height of four feet, six feet, or eight feet for the northerly most 25 feet of the fence adjacent to the western property line of 270 West Eggleston.
Thank you. I have a copy, if you want to hold that. All right, do we have, we need a second if we're going to discuss this. Alderman Palmski, seconds. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank city staff and the city attorney for their support in crafting the language of that amendment. And by way of comment, I will add that during its deliberation, the zoning and planning commission introduced the condition of an eight-foot fence. As the commission's recommendation moved forward, there was discussion about the fence placement and landscaping, but little or no discussion related to the height of the fence. Over the past two weeks, I've given thought to the fence and the ways the four adjacent homes vary in terms of the distances between the homes and the property line, and between the homes and the proposed parking spaces. Given each home's placement, I think it's possible that a shorter fence may be appropriate. The amendment maintains the requirement of an eight-foot fence, but adds the option for each property owner to instead choose a four-foot or six-foot fence for the section adjacent to their property. The owners at 270 West Eggleston would have the option to elect one fence height for the first 25 feet of the fence on the west side of their property, and choose a second height for the rest of their portion of fence. The other three property owners would elect one height. Just want to add two points. One is that the adjacent property owners are not required to take any action. The fence will be eight feet unless they affirmatively elect a different height. And two, it's not unusual to have a fence that changes height as it runs alongside a house and moves from the front to backyards. It's also not unusual to have a fence that changes height at property lines. The height of one neighbor's fence may be different than the height of the neighbor's fence next door. I think the option of a shorter fence makes this a better project, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. We're on discussion on the amendment with respect to fence height. Additional discussion on that? Alderman Palmski?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to offer some context about the landscaping requirements and the situation. On board docs, there is a memo that was written by zoning and planning administrator Eileen Franz, and in it she poses questions and answers that are helpful in making decisions in this case. One of the questions is, is the transition yard requirement being met? So, what the question pertains to is, what sort of barrier or boundary or buffer does there have to be? And her answer is, transition yard requirement is not applicable to the properties subject to the request, as they are zoned R2 and R4. The requirement is for commercially zoned properties, and specifically references a building or structure. So essentially, there's no requirement of fence, or landscaping, or both, or what the standard would be in between the proposed parking lots, which are on residential properties, and their next-door neighbors. You know, in this case, you know, that we have to look at the details. So in addition to not having a required transition, we also are not looking at a structure. At one point, there was a, in addition to the eight-foot fence, report included an opportunity for neighbors to be reimbursed if they chose for land...
Alderman Palmski, we're just on the amendment for fence height.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. I just want to speak to why I'm supporting the amendment for the fence.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, thank you. So, at one point, there was an opportunity to allow for neighbors' choice, and that was in part because there was a condition for an eight-foot fence. And with that, that would have allowed for a neighbor to be reimbursed if they wanted to block the view of the fence. Alderman Deuter's amendment serves to allow for a choice if the neighbors want to look at something a little bit different, but still allows for a barrier between their properties and the proposed parking lots. So, I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Palmski over there. All right. Additional discussion on the amendment? Alderman Mulliner?
Even though I believe in giving as much choice as we can to the neighbors, I don't believe that this is a ordinance that is a wise ordinance when it comes to building fences along parking lots that are adjacent to neighbors. At some point, I would assume that the neighbors would sell their property, and when they sell their property, I think that we should be consistent with all parking lots that are even within a stone's throw of a, of a neighbor who has residential. I think it should be an eight-foot fence to provide that necessary buffer, keeping in mind that there is lighting issues that have to be dealt with. There's, you know, people peering over the fence, and eight-foot fence makes it difficult for people to be looking over the fence. So there's all kinds of issues that arrive as soon as you allow that flexibility, especially when it's talking about, even though we'd like to say that this is R2 versus R2, it's actually R2 going into now a parking lot, which does become something slightly different than R2. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mulliner. Additional discussion? Alderman Bastido?
Because it does give the choice to the neighbors, I'll be voting in favor of this amendment, but I really don't think that giving them the option of a shorter fence adds anything to their use and enjoyment of their land. I wish maybe a 10-foot fence had been considered, or something greater than eight feet, but since it is up to the neighbors, I will vote yes on this amendment.
Other discussion on the amendment? Alderman Park?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting, supporting this amendment, because I do think that the height of the fence, there are some pluses of more sunshine, more wind, especially if it's an opaque fence to get more air in the yard. And being that I'm 6'2", I don't see a lot of people who are over six feet that are going to peer over, you know, a six-foot fence, if that's what someone would choose to have, so that they can see more of the greenery of the peripath, or what have you. So I will be in support of this amendment.
Thank you. Others? Alderman Brennan, did you want to comment on this particular amendment?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll get you on the main. All right, other discussion? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment. The amendment is to amend the fence height requirement, which is before you. Everyone clear? All right, Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Toledo?
No.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest absent. Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
No.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one absent.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one absent. The amendment passes. Back to the main, the motion on the ordinance. Additional discussion? Alderman Brennan, did you want to speak on this?
I did, Mayor. Thank you very much. First off, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So, two weeks ago, I did not support the report that was in favor of a parking lot east of Spring, and north and south of Eggleston. And since that time, nothing's been brought to my attention to change my opinion. I believe the size of the parking lot is too big. I believe it is invasive to the bordering homeowners. I believe it will negatively impact the neighborhood east of Spring, on Eggleston, and specifically impact the property values of the bordering homes. For these reasons, I cannot support the ordinance before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Others? Other discussion? Alderman Veremis?
Thank you, Mayor. I have firsthand experience as a resident disputing a conditional use permit. I learned the process of how the commission evaluates the uses, and now as an Alderman, how the committee, committee and council members analyze the commission's findings. And that is what I have done. From reading transcripts, emails, speaking with residents, visiting the site several times, and example sites, including Manny's Ale House located in my neighborhood. And I agree with the commission that the standards, including the second standard, have been met by the applicant. There are no zoning changes to the parcels. There are several parking lots adjacent to homes throughout our community. Our comprehensive plan addresses the need for parking, and specifically refers to these parcels. The applicant has shown evidence it will not diminish property values. Therefore, I support the report and the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veremis. Additional discussion? Alderman Bastido?
I will be voting no for this ordinance, because I still think the city should not allow houses to be torn down and turned into parking lots. And Alderman Veremis, you talked about, yes, there are parking lots next to homes. We have not allowed houses to be torn down and turned into parking lots. There is a huge difference there. I hope with a few weeks to consider it, a couple of you will agree that what was created for the minority report is actually worse for the neighbors than what came out of the commission. And the map that's on there now doesn't even say where the fence line will be. Many liked a plan that they had seen in between, which gave a lot more feet to the neighbors, but that's not what's in front of us. The code asks us to consider the neighbors' use and enjoyment of their land. It says not to grant a conditional use if it's going to lessen their use and enjoyment of the land, lessen the use and enjoyment of their home, their biggest asset. I choose to believe the neighbors, my neighbors, that their, the hours and hours of testimony that are on the record, the pages and pages of testimony, I find it very convincing that their use and enjoyment will be lessened by this move. Even with the amendment that I moved for last time, this is still worse than what came out of the commission, and I will be voting no.
Thank you, Alderman Bastido. Alderman Palmski?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to walk through my comments from two weeks ago, but I would like to touch on a couple of points. And one is related to property values. So in addition to being bound by the evidence that was gathered and established on the record in the zoning planning hearing about potential for a significant decline in property values, there's some additional guidance from CMAP that says, "The designation of a use as one that is permitted as a special use in a particular zone represents a determination of a governing body of three things. One, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, it's subject to particular standards imposed on special uses, and it is compatible with existing uses and the zoning of nearby property." So by having it as a conditional use, these are baked-in factors. And I want to talk a little bit about the zoning planning commission and committee. During our training, we reviewed that the zoning planning commissioners are a fact-finding body, and as Chair of the zoning planning commission, Susan Rose, explained, "It's really up to the committee," or technically our code says, "council," either, it's the elected officials, "to negotiate." So sometimes it is necessary for the council to alter conditions, and sometimes it is elective. In this case, I, I would contend that it was necessary to engage about the landscaping, because the zoning planning commission did not move the location of the fence from the lot line. The application had it on the lot line. There were, and I'm just going from memory, I didn't expect this. On April 20th, there are rebuttal documents that speak to what we call Plan B, and that document, it wasn't called that. It essentially is the same setup, in that it has 18 and 1/2-length parking spaces and 23-foot-wide drive aisles, but it does angle the parking a bit, and that's what's called Plan B. So what was approved by the condition speaks to Plan B, and the plot, or the location of the fence, was not moved, although the zoning planning commission did say landscaping on the resident's side. So that is something that fact-finding body is not really in a position to operationalize. I like Alderman Toledo's word on this. So that's one, one area where I would say it's necessary for the Aldermen to discuss. It also was necessary to discuss and evaluate the hours of operation. The zoning planning commission is not in a position to suspend the rules and call our police chief and ask how hours of operation, lighting, removal from the property, if the building is still operating and the use is still needed, how that would be enforced. So that's really the work of the elected. So, you know, and I will also say that not only will this meet the stormwater requirements of storing any additional impervious, or accounting for any additional impervious surface, it does add the condition of an inlet to allow water to flow from a neighbor's property, so it is not blocked by the parking lot, and it will continue on. So, I just want to speak to those points. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Palmski. Additional discussion? Alderman Mulliner?
My position has not changed on this at all. As you're aware, this is a situation where we're putting in a parking lot with, with cars actually pointed right directly at homes. We've never done this before. I know, we'd like to contend that we have, this is within a 10-foot distance to the home, versus the situation where in most of the other cases, the homes are, the parking lots are either perpendicular, or parallel to the home, or there's a alleyway in between. As far as I can tell, the only one that's not like that is the one that's at Sailor and Montrose. So I am still not going to vote in favor of this. I have a couple of issues that I think we really need to look carefully at. One is hours of operation. I have a legal question to ask about that, and that is, within a zoning code, which is more powerful? The zoning code, or our regular ordinance? Our regular ordinance allows this restaurant to be open until the hours that the liquor license is applied for. So if we restrict that to a reduced number of hours, who has power? The, the conditional use, or the zoning, or the regular ordinance according to liquor licenses? That's my first question. I have a couple others.
So your question...
This is Andy Akra. I could speak to that.
Come in, Andy. Come in, Andy.
Yes, hello?
Come in. We hear you.
Yes. My understanding of the interaction of those two ordinances is that the sale of liquor is not affected by the zoning restriction, and that that would not be a limitation on the hours that they could sell the liquor.
And that's correct. And to just further add to that, the, the ordinance that, the zoning ordinance with the conditions would be applicable and would trump over the general conditions of the city code zoning ordinance. So the special use ordinance would control.
So my question falls into this, and that is, if we're going to tell them that the hours of operation are from X time till midnight, when it hits midnight, who is going to be the one who's going to go out and monitor the parking lot to make sure that everyone who is at the bar, who has parked back there, is going to leave that parking lot and move to a different parking lot that's open after midnight? Who has that authority?
Well, the police department does. I don't know, I think the enforcement is, whether it's nine, 10, 11, or 12, if it's in violation of an ordinance.
I understand that, but I don't believe we're going to have enough police officers to monitor a parking lot. That's my concern.
And it is on the property owner with respect to compliance with the conditions of the special use. So if they allow the parking lot to be open beyond the hours that are authorized by the special use permit, they will be in violation of the special use permit.
Okay. Just something for us to consider as we move forward. Another issue that I see in front of us is the noise that is going to come from this after the hours. This is moving a parking lot, and the ability to, even though I know you've got the garbage located in particular locations, there can be significantly increased amount of noise when you have a parking lot that's there after hours. We have in the past requested that the owner of a bar or other facility not take their garbage out until the morning after, after the parking lot or the facility is closed, so that we don't disturb the neighbors. I think that's something that we may need to look at. And then two other things that I see that are, we really need to talk about. One is the fact that, as has been stated a number of times, we, as a city, are responsible for the parking. The owner of the restaurant is not responsible for the parking. Yes, he has every legal right to put parking in there, but he is not responsible for putting that parking in there. So he does not, he should not feel like he's obligated to put this parking in because he feels that we're pushing him toward that. The last thing that I'll say about this, and then I'll let you, then we'll move on. As you look at the parking lot, this is for a restaurant whose entrance is on Spring Road. As they walk from the parking lot, which way are they going to go? Are they going to go down Agelston? Are they going to go down the prairie path? And where, you know, I hate to say it, but where's the garbage going to end up? Is it going to end up in the prairie path? Is it going to end up on Agelston? Is it going to end up on Spring Road? Just things that, as you're looking at this ordinance, you need to think a little bit about before we make a decision on our final vote. I absolutely am opposed to this. The more and more I look at it, the worse I think this situation is. It has no benefit to, I don't even believe it really has a benefit to the restaurant. I believe that it has no benefit to anyone in that area. So I am absolutely opposed to this.
Thank you, Alderman Mullenner. Additional discussion. Alderman Park.
Yes, I would just like to point out, I think if we look at the map or at Google Maps, an aerial view, there is parking that is perpendicular, that is just east of 266. It's the Wild Trace Meadows Townhome Parking. So I'd just like to point that out. And as you can see from my comments when I pass this out, there are several different zoning, several different ways properties are zoned in that area, and as well as several different types of parking in that area that is quite unique, and you can see on the wider parts where everything is more residential. Thank you.
Alderman Mullenner.
I just need to make sure that everybody understands, because not everybody can see these pictures. What they're talking about is a set of townhomes that are required to have parking. The parking is within their own bounds, within their own area. They're pointing toward their own homes. Yes, I can find apartments that are going to have something similar to that, but those are parking, those are apartments. None of them appoint directly toward a residential, single-family home.
All right. Additional discussion on the motion as amended. All right, I believe we're ready to vote. So we are now voting on the main ordinance as amended. Everyone clear?
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
No.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest absent. Bastido?
No.
Mullenner?
No.
Brennan?
No.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
No.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
Seven ayes, zero, six nays, one absent.
Seven ayes, six nays, one absent, and the mayor is required to vote under the fact that there are seven, half the elected officials are voting in favor of it. It doesn't change the result, but my vote is aye. Sir, sir, you're not a participant to this. You've been to court. Yes. That's the end of item 6.2. I would like to say, I know that, as I said last time, but even more so since the last meeting, I know that aldermen have spent a great deal of time working on this, struggling through this, whichever way you voted. I recognize the hard work you put in, and I thank you all for that. I think that although people may not like the result, they should be proud of the work of our elected officials. Onto item seven, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. October 23rd is a big police fire day. You can go to the police department first and drop off your unneeded prescription drugs between 9 o'clock and 2 o'clock at our police department. Then there is a blood drive same day, 8 o'clock to 2 o'clock at our south firehouse, South York Road, 601 South York. And also wanted to remind the community that we do have trick-or-treating hours on Sunday, October 31st, 3:30 to 7:30, 3:30 to 7:30. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items today. First, the DuPage County Health Department has reopened the community vaccine clinic, and that's located at the Fairgrounds off of County Farm Road. And you can go to their website to look for their hours and make appointments. And that local pharmacies also have the booster shots, so those who are looking to either get vaccinated or get the booster shot can stay at local pharmacies or go out to the county to get that taken care of. Second item is, we got notified today as part of the Tollway Project along 294 and 290, that they are going to close a ramp, a significant ramp, for a 30-day period. And this is the ramp that would take vehicles from south 294 to north or westbound 290. So a lot of people from Elmhurst use that to get to North Avenue. So that ramp is going to be closed starting Thursday for a 30-day period. The, the alternative, or the detour, is to continue south on 294 to eastbound 290, go to Mannheim, take the interchange ramps, and then come back west. So a significant detour for everybody. That is information we'll be posting on the website first thing tomorrow, and we'll send it out as well as an advisory to Elmhurst residents. And then last item, last week during our staff meeting, we met over at the History Museum. And I really want to compliment Dave and his staff on a, on a great exhibit for Elmhurst University. If you want to learn some history about the university, not just the community, but the history, please go visit that. Very, very interesting, and thanks to Dave and his staff for putting that together.
Thank you, City manager. Any other reports or recommendations of elected officials? Alderman Brennan, just in case, do you have anything out there?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Item eight, other businesses. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? There being.
No.
I thought it was code. All right. I thought you were bidding. All right. There being none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Alderman Hill, second. Should be an easy second. Alderman Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're in order. You have to take a roll call. You need to take a roll call. Oh, I almost made it. Yeah. All right. Don't go away, Alderman Brennan. We're going to do a roll call.
Toledo?
I'm here.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest absent. Bastido?
Aye.
Mullenner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent. We are adjourned. Thank you.